Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed.
We're gonna say the Lord's Prayer. Thank you, Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Deedee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl.
Here.
Thank you. Our first audience public comment. Seeing that we have no comment cards, I'll just take this time to tell you to put your phone on vibrate or silent. And when we do have comments, there's no back and forth. And I'm gonna do something a little different. I just have two really quick comments, because when I wait till the end of the meeting, sometime, nobody's left over here. Two grants. This council worked very hard. The half a million dollar demo grant, where we got all of y'all help, where we got community members to volunteer to tear certain things down for free. Well, we got the grant. So that, your hard work has paid off. That's a half a million dollars to go toward cleaning our city. The next grant, because sometimes I think people are like, what's getting done over there? Well, this next one's huge. The 2.9 million that we have budgeted for the detention-retention pond in your district, Brooke, is still coming. Plans are being, you know, developed. It's a good project. We applied for a grant, and we got it. So we are getting $3.1 million.
Oh, wow.
So what that does, it's huge. Not only did we still fix your problem and our community's problem, but now we have 2.9 million, just about, that we had budgeted that will go back into drainage. Now I can marry that, with your permission, with the million dollars we're spending on cleaning canals, but now we got some horsepower. Now we really can spend some money and do some drainage. So anyway, I wanted to do this at the beginning, because, like I said, at the end, sometimes, nobody's left over here. But thank you for your hard work. Now we'll move on to item 2A. Madam Clerk.
Acceptance of the minutes. Regular meeting of December 19th, 2023, which were published on December 30th, 2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Councilman David Broussard. Is there any discussion on our minutes of our meeting of December 19th? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. 2B.
Special meeting of December 28th, 2023, which will be published on January 4th, 2024.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this special meeting of December 28th? Seen hearing none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, 3A.
Ordinance number 2023-33, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and CSG Forte Payments Incorporated for online payment processing.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot and Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. Is there anybody here to comment on this issue? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. Now we're back to the main item. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? I can report back on the contract.
Okay, I'll let you go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Say that first.
Um, we sent it all immediately the next day. I want to thank you for your efforts and red line and everything. That sped us both up. We got it in. It's still in there legal. We checked on it today. So they didn't say no. We know that we're gonna have to sign the contract either way, because they're the horsepower for Civic Rec. They're the billing operation. We have to have them. It's two weeks lag time from the time we say go. So what we did today was let them know that it came to the meeting tonight. I was gonna inform the council that at least some of our items are under consideration. I don't have an answer yet.
Right.
But I'm asking you to vote for it and in favor of it, and I'll get any change I can get out of them. But I did send it in, and it is with their legal.
Okay. I mean, I don't feel like anything that we ask for is unreasonable. It's just trying to protect us.
I agree. I agree. On the flip side, I do know that I have to have them, but they don't know that. So, you know, we'll just hopefully at least get some consent. They gotta give us something.
Right. Hey, we can move the needle with Cleco. We can move the needle with Forte.
Yeah, we are on a timeline, though. I would, you know.
I know. I know. I just want us to... We don't want to sign this long, and then, long term, we have a problem. I just wanted to make sure we were protected. Get what you can. Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
So we should have this all ready by February 1st, you think?
I'm hoping.
Okay.
That's my hope.
Okay.
You know? I mean, we have a lot of moving parts to begin to rent. You know, our goal is to rent fields in February. Okay? And Jeff, Brooke resigned from the board.
I got the text today.
Okay, I just wanted to tell you, because now she's back in the game.
Yes.
Good.
You know, we are trying by February to start renting fields. We have ads out for monitors. Okay? Great jobs for high school kids and up. So we are really getting applications in and moving on that quickly. We have to have those monitors in place. We have to have some civil service employees in place. We're working on that. We still need an assistant director, although we have a position that we have created that is an assistant director. And we have someone coming for 28 hours a week, who actually worked for the city before and will do a great job. So we're moving in that direction. But those staff things have to happen. We have to have this contract here. And then we have two weeks that, between Civic Rec and them, to kind of interface, if you will. And then that's ready to go. So we making the steps that we need. So we trying. I mean, I believe me, we have spent almost $4 million. We have 1.5 million coming from the state that I got a letter that the money's approved and that our architecture can start. So that's huge.
Excellent.
We bought the property behind Lowe's. We are in the process of bidding out the private drive extension to give us another way out. So I mean, we're not finished construction. This is a very important project for all of us. But believe me, I want to get it open as, you know, quickly as we can. And so does Richard.
Oh, yeah. I know it's a lot of moving parts, and we've been ready to rent the field for like, probably six months.
I know. But it wasn't even built then. But it's okay. I like you.
He's impatient, though.
I like you ready. I like you ready. You sure? Go ahead.
No, I was just thinking on the road when you mentioned it with the additional drainage money. Can we use drainage money to put that cover down in that drainage ditch? You think to substitute that money we put for the road?
We could. We can use TIF dollars, or we could use drainage. And so maybe for that portion, I'll check the budget and see what has more money in it. That's not a bad idea. Drainage has more in it, especially now. So I'll probably use the drainage for the cover.
For that big cover, yeah.
Yeah. I could probably pay for the hydrology study, I think, is in the grant.
Just look at it and let us know.
But I might have to pay something, so. Yes, ma'am?
I did have one question about the pricing. There's a credit card chargeback fee of $25 per chargeback. Is that being charged to us or to the consumer? The person who... Because, I mean, is that gonna be passed on to them?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's passed on to the consumer.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Because, I mean...
No, that's a lot of transactions. I mean, a lot of things could happen.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you all. Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Appreciate it. And I'll let you know what they agree to. Item 3B.
Ordinance number 2023-34, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract for computer service and maintenance by and between the City of New Iberia and Vince Como El Elsie.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Dan Dahl and a second, I'm not sure who beat who.
I heard him. Actually, didn't hear him.
Okay. Great. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Now we're back to the main motion. I will need a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any discussion on this item?
So I just had a question for Vince.
Sure. Vince, come on up.
So we're not gonna rehash what we talked about last time.
I was wondering, but I was just waiting, you know.
I knew you guys were waiting.
Yes, ma'am.
But I did have a question.
He was waiting, too.
Not going there. I've already told you what I think about that. And on the contract, though, it does say what is not included. And I get that. All the things that you're saying are not included. What's your rate if we need you to do any of these things? Because that's what's not here. Like, is there a specific rate for...
My current rate is 150 for this year. And then anytime I do a third party, I usually get a quote from them and present it to the city.
Okay. All right. I just, that wasn't listed here? And that will be one of the things in the future. Maybe we could get that listed.
The last three years, the only thing that, I guess, hasn't been that we have extra billing was third party.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we get quotes every time. I want him to have, you know...
Anytime I do something that isn't included, we've done quotes, but I don't think we've had anything in that realm.
Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, Vince.
We glad to know who's behind the scenes.
It's him.
Now, one question. So we taking on the new Papaplex software system? That's not gonna come on? That's gonna come on with Vince's? If something goes wrong with Vince, to operate that on?
Vince would service the computers, okay? If something goes down on a computer...
Normally, what we do is...
But...
We work with the vendor.
Right.
To get it set up and stuff. And we have been working with them to get everything set up.
I just know we expand it.
Yeah. Anytime there's new software or anything, we always work with them.
He implements or helps us implement it.
And I think, same thing with the new database.
Yes.
We've been coordinating that.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yep.
Yeah, I just saw where it had, like, security camera installation. I'm like, so what would he charge us to do that if we needed him to do that?
Yeah.
150 an hour.
He's actually done a few. That's a good thing. All right. Moving on to 3C.
Ordinance number 2023-35, an ordinance amending sections 86-101 and 86-105 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia relating to electronic traffic enforcement.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none? Need a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. Now we move on to the main motion. I need one.
Motion.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. I have the chief here, and we can have a discussion. This is our crime cameras. This is a system that we have worked... Wait.
No traffic.
Oh, this is the traffic enforcement.
Yeah.
All right. I'm sorry. I was jumping, man. I was jumping. Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Okay, so it looks like you did a red line on this, and some things are changing.
Oh, you weren't at the last meeting, that's true.
Right. So the written request is gonna be made and delivered to Blue Line Solutions. Why are they now handling this hearing part?
They don't handle the hearing part. We hired April, and April's gonna come in definitely. And she is a private attorney, and she will handle if there is an appeal.
No, I get that. But in here, on the contract, it's saying that our... The ordinance is saying the written request shall be made to and delivered to Blue Line Solutions.
Right. They keep track, and they give them to us 30 at a time.
Okay.
So people have to still go to Blue Line and say, I want to appeal this ticket. They put together a list, and those people haven't paid because they're appealing. They keep track of it, then they shoot it over to us, and we give it to April, and April puts together a hearing date.
Okay.
And we will have, we'll probably use the front building, because none of these people are criminals. We don't need to go into a courtroom. We'll use our meeting room up in the front. And they'll come, and there'll be a hearing where they have, you know, their day to appeal. And it's not anything like the chief or the city prosecutor. I get that right, chief?
Yeah. Basically, they're acting as the clerk.
Okay.
That's all they're doing, because they have all the information.
Okay, so on the ticket, I'm assuming it says that if you want to appeal, you can contact Blue Line. And here's the number, email address, whatever.
Yes.
Okay. I haven't seen a ticket, so I'm not sure.
When somebody files the appeal, they're basically, Blue Line is putting information they have along with that appeal and sending it to April.
Okay. All right, cool. I just wasn't sure that changed.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And Nicole Burke is the one who reviewed this and recommended these changes.
Yes.
To clean it up.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I think you made a mention at one point that it would be a $50 fee, and then we waived that fee.
There is no fee.
No fee.
There is no fee. People shouldn't have to pay to get their shot at justice. They might not get it, but they shouldn't have to pay 50 bucks. So that went away. The fine was reduced. We put up billboards. We washed away the 4,000 infractions and made them all warnings. It goes hot on January the 8th. We have billboards out so that people know. And our crews, I mean, the 4,000 tickets and the, I don't know, almost 200 people that came to the meeting did a great service by getting the word out. What they did was what we did not do well enough at doing. They certainly got the word out. Public Works crews on Friday will go and install. The state statute says between 250 and 500 feet, they will go and install permanent signs that say speed enforcement. We already have them and meet the code by what Blue Line installed. But to go one extra effort, the city is putting signs up that say, "Speed enforcement ahead." And so those will go up. So I think we've kind of leveled the playing field, taken some, a stance that kind of reduce some of this that we certainly heard the citizens that came and that called and emailed and stopped us places. So on the flip side, school has been closed, and I still see people going very slow through the school zone. So what we want to happen is not a money grab. It's please slow down. It's already working. So hopefully, with all the steps we've taken, this council has taken, we will kind of relieve some of that pressure and get it to where people understand they just need to slow down in the school zones. Yes, sir?
Yeah.
Yep. Real quick, and just to verify, and I talked to the mayor about it during the holidays. I spoke with the City of Caron Crow, who uses this system. They have statistics to back up the fact that within two years that they've been on this system, 96% reduction in speeding through school zones.
Excellent.
And I have notified Blue Line this morning, which they have received of the new fines.
Mayor.
Uh, yes.
One more thing, man.
Yes, Councilman Dahl.
You mentioned to people that they do not pay at the City Hall. They have to mail their fine, correct?
Yes, yes. There's no fines right now. But when they start again on January the 8th, they pay directly to Blue Line.
Right.
And Blue Line, we have a, you know, a split.
Right.
It's handled there. That's part of their responsibility.
It's a different fine than to get one with a police officer.
Oh, very much different, sir. We made the fine since... Correct me if I'm right, the 10 over is $80. And prior to that, it was 183. And if you get one from the city police, it's 395. And the 395 ticket also goes on your insurance. These are civil penalties, so they don't go on your insurance.
Because I was up here the other day. Someone came up here to pay the fine in a school zone. He didn't know that we changed it. And I said, first of all, you don't pay that fine here. You mail it, but that has been till January 8th. You won't have no fine.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Yes, sir?
Where are we with the speeds on cameras and on Hopkins Street, on that state highway?
I will give the... We have two of them, Center Street and Hopkins Street.
Yes. Well, everything on a state highway, if you're familiar, Department of Transportation and Development, DOTD controls what happens on a state right of way. They will, they have to go through a permitting process. Blue Line is coordinating with the state, but it has not been approved by DOTD yet.
Okay.
So the reason why the other one's up is because they're not state highways.
Right, I understand that. I just wanted to know where we were in that process.
It's, DOTD is still in the process of approval. And you know how that bureaucracy side works.
My God. Because the tree is...
Yes, sir.
So I'm just kind of reflecting back on the meeting on the speeding tickets. Several people said they didn't have a line to call to talk to my Blue Line. Is that, is that available now? Or did we change that?
Yeah, well, that's why the ordinance is being, with Ms. Johnson, Councilman Reed, mentioned is that there was a, where it went through my office instead of Blue Line, which was originally thought of. It was my miscommunication where, when the ordinance was drafted, it came to my office. I hadn't prepared my office.
Yeah.
And I just, I misunderstood where that went. And I thought it was going to Blue Line originally. So that's the miscommunication. We have since corrected that.
Okay, so that is corrected.
Yes.
Now, they talked to Blue Line. They're still not satisfied. They can appeal. They appeal. They get in a group. The group tickets come down, and they have a local person to talk to.
So if they call your office, it'll be, hey, this is the number to contact Blue Line. Give them the same stuff.
Correct. And everything is behind that violation notice they get. It's all written on there, just like a regular citations you'd get from city police. Behind there, it says the city court number and all that stuff. Theirs is the same way on the civil side. You have to contact them.
Okay.
Councilwoman Ledbetter.
Excuse me. Um, question.
Yes, ma'am.
We added a number seven to G. The vehicle was being operated by a judge or district attorney or assistant district attorney in the performance of their duties. So they're kind of exempted from that? It's there.
It is in there.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't add that.
No, that was in there the first time.
Well, why we have that one there? I know it was adjusted. The numbers were adjusted some way, somewhere. Something was added in there.
Yeah, well, we added the corrections we're talking about. But I know, I know we didn't add that in.
I'm just wondering...
Chief, why is that in there?
Missing it, which, what is in there?
If a judge or DA gets a citation to exempt from the rule.
In the performance.
In the act of their job.
What would they be doing?
I mean, the only thing I could see, cause that, that particular portion was sent down by Blue Line off, off of other cities related to us. The only thing I could see is maybe there was some law. Um, I, I would have to defer to Mr. Simon.
I don't know, I know it was in the original.
Yeah, it was in the original.
It was in the original, yeah. Cause I noticed it in the original.
Would they be speeding to get to some important?
I don't know.
Trial?
I, I, I can tell you that we haven't exempted my agency or any other agency. So, we haven't exempted ourselves. Because now, the only exception would be as of our, if our offices are going to an emergency call where they had to escalate to speed then, but that would have to be defined by the case number that they're, that they're responding to, it'd have to be justified.
I get that, so can we take that one off?
Sure, I, I, you know, I think it, it brings up a good point, but I'm not willing to remove it from the contract unless we get clarification of why it's in there and why it's not in there.
It's not a contract.
Well.
The ordinance.
It's in the contract as well.
Yeah, but it's our ordinance. Our ordinance attaches to the contract. Probably both right, but, uh, yeah, I don't know, that's a weird one. Good to be a judge.
It is in the performance of their duties. You know, it's not going to bother.
Right.
That's funny.
So, you know.
I'm just asking, what kind of duty would they be performing to exceed the speed limit? Good point.
I can tell you on our perspective is that the DA nor anyone has contacted me or, or the mayor about doing this. So, this was in original verbiage, I'm sure, from what Blue Line had done with other cities. So, I'm not sure why it is, but nobody from the DA's office anywhere has requested that. You had your hand up?
I was just gonna say, um, is there a reason why we can't strike it from there? Cause it feels like, you know, I mean, if that's the case, then let's let the council be exempt, you know? We might be in performance of our duties.
We're not doing that.
Running to demolition. I'm joking.
That is a pretty good joke, but.
I am joking, just so everybody knows, but.
That's gonna be the headline tomorrow, Dee Dee.
Oh, I know.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed wants to exempt herself.
I'm joking.
And she speeds to a demolition.
No, no. I'm joking, but I'm with councilwoman Ledbetter. I feel like that's, why would we give them an exemption? Are they gonna have a case number two? Like the, the police officers? Cause if they don't, then what performance of what duty requires you to speed? Through a school zone?
Well, why don't we do this? I would like to understand why it's even in there. So, we can vote on this tonight, we can change an ordinance anytime we want to.
Right.
We can vote on this tonight to keep moving, because I need this in place, because January 8th is coming. And then we can find out, you know, and figure out why this is in there to begin with, and then make a decision on that. Yes, sir, you had your hand up?
Yeah, and I don't mean to be picky, but the question tonight is, do you amend this as proposed?
Right.
And this is really not amending it as proposed. You could say yes or no for the changes that are proposed, but this is a new change. So, yeah, I think we need to take this up separate, yeah.
Just save that for another day. It's, it's a great point, and now you got me curious, but I think, you know, we need this to function for January 8th. If we're gonna do everything that we promised people we were gonna do. So, I, I think we, it's kind of, you know, on our, we should be obliged to, to do this, because we put all these changes in place, this is the final one. And then after we get an answer of why judges and DAs, or what are they doing in their job? Yes, ma'am, or what are they doing in their job duties? We can always address that again, you know, at another day. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, I don't know if you guys covered this at the last meeting. I was looking for the video, but there wasn't any, so I couldn't, I wasn't showing up, the notes weren't as clear. But, um, one of the questions that we had on December 19th meeting was, why should I be responsible for a ticket if someone else is driving my car? We are still with the fact that they are responsible for getting that person to say that, um, they were driving the car, not the person who owns the car.
Yeah, they would go through, they would go through the appeal process.
Right, and if not, if they can't get that person to agree, they have to pay the ticket, correct?
Yes.
And I'm only asking this because I, I was on the radio talking about an event, and they, they brought up the speeding, speed cameras in the school zones. Uh, so I just wanna make sure that people are clear, that has not changed. You will have to get that other person to agree that they actually were the person driving the car at the time that the speeding ticket was, um, received. So, yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Or they would have to pay themselves, since it's their legal vehicle.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, and just don't let them drive your car again. But, on another thing.
Yeah.
Cause I, I do recall, the guy came and said he had six vehicles and he got nine tickets, and he wasn't driving any of them.
Yeah.
Well.
They keep a record. Who's driving?
It's our insurance company, wanna know that.
Yeah.
We'll give y'all two for one.
Okay.
That's why my grandpa always told me, don't let nobody drive your car, son. And the other one is, if I'm not mistaken on law and order, doesn't the DA always show up to the crime scene? For most of the.
Yeah, well, sometime.
Does the judge?
Hopefully not.
Throwing it out there, do we work on one or on both?
That's funny.
It's funny. Any other discussion on this item? And after a very interesting discussion, I'd ask you to vote machines. Thank y'all very much. All right, Madam Clerk, 4A.
Resolution number 24-01, a resolution approving change order number two for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Bank Street Park Improvements and Additions, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protimbri Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed. Hello, David.
Hello.
Good evening. Tell us about this one.
Uh, this is a change order, just to kind of bring the project up to date on the rain delays. So, there's 11 additional days, uh, just to kind of finish up the project. They did finish the project within the timeframe, so, uh, this is just kind of a paperwork thing that we need to do to keep everything in line with the contract.
Questions, comments?
Next item will be about the substantial.
Yeah, yeah. Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you. 4B.
Resolution number 24-02, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Bank Street Park Improvements and Additions, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed.
All right, so this is the substantial completion, the contractor has substantially completed, and in fact, almost 100% completed the project, including the punch list items, I talked to them today about it. So, they finished it within the timeframe and under the budget. We did have a, you know, there is a value on the punch list, um, but like I said, they kind of pretty much completed most of those items. We have some photos of the completed work, so the main bulk of the project with, of kind of two, two projects is the pavilion, refurbishment of the pavilion. So, that's new lighting, new basketball court markings, we relocated some goals to make it actually a full court. And then we have two practice half courts.
Demo'd that.
And then we demoed the middle building. Like I said, LED lighting turns on and off, the flip-off switch instantly. Painted the outside, new gutters and downspouts to help with erosion, we fixed the columns, which were, you know, severely eroded too. And that covered pretty much most of the building, the pavilion. And then we had the walking trail that, um, looped around the entire park on the peripheral, going through the tree groves and the open areas, all concrete. We originally were gonna use a, a stone concrete mix, um, but contractor gives good deal to do it all concrete. And that's gonna be much better on maintenance and longevity.
Yeah, I went jogging on there the other day, before I left.
Cool, it's good.
And we had a, an arborist come through the, with the project too, just to kind of give some assistance on, you know, making sure the trees weren't affected and, you know, gave some good advice about how to meander through the path, the tree groves and things like that.
Are they gonna, like, pressure wash the?
They've pressure washed it, city park department has cleaned it too.
Okay.
Um, we're in a rainy season, that's, you know, there's gonna be debris that happens, but until some of that grass grows around it, um, it'll help, but, you know, it's just gonna be general maintenance, it's just gonna keep it clean in those, those dirty areas.
Okay, so this is more park-related kind of stuff. So, this is not a question for, uh, David. Okay, um, first thing is, is there like, um, a process for people coming out? Cause I know that we put pickleball lines on that court. And so, is there gonna be, uh, some sort of process for people having to, uh, sign up to, you know, maybe do, play pickleball for a couple hours? Because the kids play on that, um, you know, on the basketball courts in the afternoon. But I know that some of the pickleball players were out there the other day, playing pickleball, which meant the kids couldn't play basketball. So, just wanna make sure we're thinking about, there could potentially be a conflict there between the children and the adults.
No, that's, that's a good point, and I think that we'll see what the usage is, and then the parks are gonna have to come up with some time-ish, time slots for both, and try to work that out. I mean, you could do reservations, but that doesn't really help if pickleballers take all the time that kids are out of school. So, I think it's gonna be more a time period for each, and we're gonna end up marking, there's another, uh, place out there that we're looking to mark on the tennis court, that could be pickleball. You'll know, we have a giant pavilion coming at the Pepperplex, and there'll be five pickleball courts. Those will be able to be used most of the time, because we own, unless the pavilion's rented, or one of the leagues are using it for opening day or for something. So, pickleball's popular in our gyms, we have already had to balance and kind of control the times, and both the basketball players and the pickleballers both want more time. I think that's a reason, one of the reasons that we're putting those five courts at the Pepperplex. So, I think that as pickleball remains popular, we are gonna have to kind of start organizing ourselves of who plays what when, because we, we have quite a few people trying to utilize it.
Right.
So, that's kind of a good problem to have, because you go from nobody using our parks, to people, you know, kind of, you know, fighting over it, jockeying for it, that, that's a good thing.
Absolutely, I just, I know that kids play at that pavilion all the time, so I just wanna make sure that they don't feel like the pickleball's taking over, and they can't play. They already feel that way, you know, in some of the parks.
And again, you know, a lot of the pickleball people drive, they, you know, they go from gym to gym. I think that once that, uh, new project's done, and those five courts are at the Pepperplex, we're gonna see a big usage, which is what we want. We want people out there. League play is very important to us, as is travel ball, but we have to develop, you know, a long-term plan. We would like a running track around the Pepperplex for, uh, cross-country, we'd like a frisbee course, you know? We're gonna try to add things everywhere we can, uh, to accommodate everybody, but it's, it's a little, there would be a little bit growing pains associated with that, I'm sure. But that's a good problem to have.
No, it is, and then one more thing.
Maybe people will stop saying there's nothing to do.
No, agree.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's just, I mean, I'm a pickleball player, so I know, I mean, love it that it's that close, but I absolutely don't want us to interfere with the kids. The last thing I had on the, um, I guess about a year ago, we talked about parks and rec, making sure that the bathrooms are open from, you know, in the morning till the evening, just like all the other parks. Because, I mean, I'm, I use that park, and I am not going to a porta potty to use the bathroom.
Yes, ma'am.
We had talked about them opening it up in the, in the morning, and then closing it down in the evening, like we do in the other parks. That is not happening, because I was there jogging, and the, the, um, the gate was locked. And that's, I mean, that's what it's here for, the citizens.
But we're gonna end up, I hate to say this, but with the new bathrooms coming downtown, that two of them will be locked and unlocked every day, the smaller ones.
Right.
With the new parks that we are renovating, parks were renovated, the new parks that are popping up, we're gonna fast end up with a person who's gonna spend a good, you know, yeah, an hour, but it's worth it. We're gonna have an employee that's gonna have to be dedicated to lock and unlock all these restrooms, but.
And cleaning.
And, yeah, yeah. And I think we're gonna have to, because, you know, leaving them unlocked all the time, we have found, does not work, and leads to a lot of complications.
And I know we have a homeless problem, so, I don't wanna leave them up overnight, but during the day, people should be able to access the bathrooms.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, you had your hand up?
Yes, um, there's also a pickleball area back by that tennis court.
That's correct.
Yeah.
There's an old tennis court there that I think y'all have plans.
Yeah, we plan on marking that one.
But we're supposed to.
But there's a tennis court, then there's a little.
The old hockey.
Yeah, it used to be hockey, that's what we're gonna mark for pickleball.
Well, we're gonna resurface it.
There was a tennis one, and then there's a smaller one off to the side of it.
That's hockey. Yeah, yeah.
That's the hockey one he's saying?
Yes, ma'am, that was hockey. Yeah, Dave, Dave and I, when we went on the walkthrough with this, we looked at, we're gonna lay one out there.
Okay.
Because it would give you an opportunity that somebody could, you know, play there while kids are playing basketball.
Exactly.
But we are gonna leave one tennis court.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, but both will be resurfaced.
Or we could do them all pickleball if we wanted to.
You could fit two on a tennis court.
You could fit two pickleball courts on a tennis court.
I get it, but some people still like to play tennis, so, I, I, I mean, I love playing pickleball, but I also like playing tennis, so. Again, I know it's the most popular thing, but there are some tennis players that still want access to tennis courts.
Yeah, and we have the, we're gonna be marking the ones behind, the old, we call them the new tennis courts, but the ones at City Park, those two are gonna get marked pickleball as well.
The ones that are behind the building?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Yeah.
I think we're gonna need a map for where we got, but that's a good, I'm looking for the money right now. Uh, we're gonna need a map to, you know, but I think it's a good thing, again, let's, let's keep up the use.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
No, I was just going, indeed it said it all, uh, I passed over on Bank Street last week, and I saw exactly what you saw. Kids waiting while people were playing pickleball.
Exactly.
But it's because them kids was out of school. I don't think we're gonna run that, you know, that problem.
Yeah, in the winter.
When school's out.
And then during the summer. Yeah, I know.
You know, what are we doing, but like you said, everybody said, it's good stuff, it's growing pains.
Yeah, it is.
And I'm proud to be a part of all of these.
Oh, I am too, I'm, I'm, I can't thank y'all enough for supporting all of this, because it's good.
And Ms. Ledbetter, I gotta tell you, cause you know I'm always bragging on the Western Park, I always take the lead, and, and you, you pushed that, you pushed it, and, and I mean, it looks great, I, I love it, I'm, I'm proud of you.
And we have some, uh, new.
I know we have to vote on everything together.
Some adult, uh, exercise equipment coming to be along it.
That we do, that we do.
Along the walking trail.
But we got, we got three nice parks in New Iberia, that's the point I'm, I'm wrong with, we got three nice parks in New Iberia, man. Uh, chief, we gotta make sure that they're safe and secure at all times.
Yep.
That, that's it, cause nobody could say, oh, we don't have nowhere to go with my family, we don't have nowhere to go to barbecue. All they could say, if so, oh, it's not safe out there, but we got a chief in the police department that's gonna make sure that happens.
And we got cameras.
I can't wait to get to 5A, I was trying to get to, on item three, I'm an idiot, but, yeah, I can't wait to get to that one.
And we're gonna have another new park coming up, a pocket park.
Yep.
On Ann Street.
And one on Henry Street.
Yep.
Okay, back to what we're supposed to be talking about, but this is all good stuff. Anything else on Bank?
That's it.
That's it? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
All right, thank y'all.
Oh, one last thing about, are we gonna put some signs up to, for the distance along the trail?
We can, that's a good idea.
Tell people how far they walk, or can walk, you know, so, I, I.
Okay.
I'm increasing every day.
All right, that's a good idea. All right, Madam Clerk, uh, 4C.
Resolution number 24-03, a resolution approving change order number one for the Western Park Air Conditioning Upgrades Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Take it.
Motion by Councilman Marla Lewis, and a second by Mayor Protimbri Gonsalas. And this item is a, this is the project that we had budgeted a hundred thousand, it came in at 104, which was a good deal, uh. I have to thank Councilman Dahl for his expertise in that issue, and, uh, he couldn't be on the job, because he became our councilperson, and that's just how it goes, but he had been very involved at the very beginning to help me with the project, and it was good. We have a change order, and this change order is because the coils on the heating system, separate from the air conditioning, it's actually good, because we're not paying that much money, cause the contractor's already there. So, the, uh, coils are damaged and leaking, so, under a change order, this contractor who's already here, will fix the coils of the boiler. And so, that's what the change order is about, and this is one of those projects that I leaned on some expert in the business, and wrote our own specs, and Hillary and I put it together and put it out for bid, and, uh, we do a lot of these small projects that, uh, you know, fairly in-house, that keep the cost down, but, uh, anyway, so this is to fix the boiler problems.
That was a good price.
It was.
Let me look at it.
Yeah, no, it is, that's, that thing's messed up. I mean, it's not bad.
Repairing it or?
No, repairing it, sir.
Repairing is a good price.
I do think in the future, we will need a boiler, want one, you know, $100,000 bite at a time, but, uh, we can get by with it for now, and then I already have that on the list for, uh, a future project, just like bank's a whole nother issue, but we're gonna need a roof on that pavilion. Okay, so at some point, and then what I do is, we do these projects, and I go assess the situation, I make my list of, okay, next year's capital outlay, or next year, grant money, or whatever we have left, you know, how can we figure to do that? So, both of those, we will probably see next year, anyway. Questions, comments?
Well, you answered it, when, that's the boiler room where, there's that thing that was making all that noise, huh?
Yeah, you remember, we'd have meetings there, we'd go to like, some kind of function, and, oh yeah, it was squealing. Nothing further, I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, 4D.
Resolution number 24-04, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement with Robert Kissner Incorporated for asphalt core testing for the city of New Iberia Asphalt Overlay Project.
I need a motion.
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 Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, and Councilman Marla Lewis, and this is just a name change, one company bought out the other company. Same people we've been doing business with, but we need to get straight with our paperwork and have the right meeting, so that's really all this is about. So, with no questions or comments, please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, I've been waiting all night for this. Madam Clerk, 5A, read it twice, no, I'll pick.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2024-01, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a sales agreement and master service agreement buying between the city of New Iberia and Active Solutions LLC for the purchase and maintenance of security equipment, and setting for public hearing on January 16th, 2024.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Wow, it was almost unanimous, I, I don't know.
Just call it unanimous motion.
Yeah, I don't know if you can do that, can we have unanimous a motion? No?
Yeah.
No, not really?
I, no, I don't think so.
Okay, he says no, so.
Somebody moves.
I didn't say anything, so.
Okay, so. Okay, I heard Dee Dee Johnson Reed, and I heard.
I motioned as well.
Okay, uh, Councilman Brooke Mark, thank y'all. Thank y'all, thank you. All right, Chief, this is our big one, this is our security system, this is, uh, something that we've all worked on for a couple of years to get to this point. And, uh, questions, comments?
Questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, so I went through the contract, and, um, and the executive summary, and there's just a few questions that I have. Is one, have they, I mean, how do we report technical issues, cause it doesn't say how we do that? There's also a preventive maintenance plan, it doesn't tell us what it includes. You know, upgrades to software, upgrades to the cameras, um, and then it says that they have, um, they give us service support for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, um, and I think it's 12, we have 12 to 24 working hours for receipt of a service call, um, follow receipt of a service call. So, I'm assuming, so who pays for the replacement camera, says that they put a loner in, is it gonna be the same camera that we, we, we have? I mean, who pays for it, wants it replaced? Um, are we getting the same pricing that we have in the contract today, or would it be new pricing? It's just, there was some things, again, I'm sure, um, Vince is probably saying, at least it's not just me.
I was getting ready, as soon as you quit, I was gonna say, hey Vince, does this seem familiar, but you beat me to it.
No, it's just, um.
I didn't even make jokes.
No, um, I just, um.
Okay, I can turn, the chief has answers on some of that, I think.
And, and so what, my next question is, um, what about if they, um, if the, the cameras, uh, are broken when they installed? I mean, it's just, there was some things that, because these are cameras, and these are things, technology changes so quickly, and technology, what if somebody shoots the camera out? It sounds like they wouldn't be responsible for it, we would be responsible for it, you know, but it doesn't outline the pricing if we have to replace it.
Uh, yes, we have the pricing of what those cameras would, would cost. That kind of, you have like, five questions mixed in there, so I'm gonna try to catch them.
Uh-huh.
Um, and, and Vince will understand that, a, a lot of this stuff is, uh, streamed, so if there is any issues, they can dial in per se. You know, so, a lot of the IT stuff is handled through them, uh, there is a point of contact with their company that we have access to, that Kellin Landry, Lieutenant Kellin Landry is in charge of our fits unit, our forensics unit, that Vince knows very well too.
Okay.
Um, that he coordinates with their per, their point of contact, and if there's any issues, they, they correct that, whatever can be done, you know, on, kind of onsite with IT side, will be done. Anything that's a maintenance to get on the pole, they will send somebody within 24 hours to have it fixed. The camera system is state-of-the-art, it's a Motorola, it's a Vigilon system. Um, I have, and I know the mayor knows, that I've been researching this for the past year. We've tested, uh, four different companies, and this was the best. This is a system that's used in Baton Rouge, New Orleans, and locations throughout the country. Motorola is a worldwide company, so, you know, this is not, uh, we're not dealing with, um, some, someone that's putting a box together out of, uh, a hobby.
No, no, I get that.
Well, trying to get, that, that, this is, this is state-of-the-art stuff. That's why they're a state contract, cause they bid actually with the state, um, so we're working off the state contract prices. Their, uh, their agreement with us covers, we talk about maintenance and, uh, and support. It's anything that, that goes wrong with the equipment itself, they, they will maintain and fix if it's broken or if it doesn't work. One thing they will do, every 25 locations at a time, uh, me and the mayor will go out with them, they will show us what they, the work that they performed, and, uh, on our end, we'll be able to view everything that, that it's operating on both sides of it, because we have a, uh, video wall and a system that's set up to receive all this. So, we will test it before, because they will submit for payment as they go.
Progress payment, like we do on our architectural project, but this way, they do 25, we punch it out, we make sure it's all legit, pay them for those 25, don't pay them again till the next 25, go up, I think it's a kind of a good system.
Yeah, so, so that way, we're able to test this as it goes, so if there is one camera, like you talked about, that is not working when they put it up, we will know.
Okay.
So, they will have to fix that as they go, they, that means the 25 are not up, they gotta fix number 23. So, they will have to make sure that, and, and before they submit for us to go do a punch list, you know, they're gonna make sure that this stuff is properly working.
So, the software to run the cameras, are they, is that proprietary software, their software?
It, it, it is, it is proprietary software, but anything on it, we own, because that, that is crime cameras, and by law, we own whatever video footage is on there.
Okay, so, let's say they don't perform, and I'm assuming that based on our contract and how much we're paying for this, we own the equipment.
Yes, oh, yeah, we own the equipment, yes.
Okay, so if, if there's a non-performance, for whatever reason, let's say, cameras aren't as great as they, you know, maybe we got a bad batch, I don't know, we decide we wanna terminate, does that mean that our crime cameras will not work without their proprietary software? And would we be able to keep that proprietary software installed until we sign up with another company?
Well, I mean, it's just like any, you buy a Toyota, you're buying a Toyota. It's similar to this when you, when you invest in any company, whether it's Motorola, Utility, other companies that, that have, uh, crime camera systems, they're gonna work off of their, off of their software.
Agree, but.
So, that's why when we did this, uh, this agreement with them, we did it for seven years. So, we have that license to operate their software for seven years in the agreement.
As long as we don't terminate.
As long as we don't terminate, right, I mean.
Pay the bill.
No, what I'm saying is that if we term, let's say we have to terminate, and we say, you guys, we own these cameras, we're terminating this agreement with you because you're not performing. Are we gonna be able to get another software package to work with these cameras?
We, we, we are.
From a different company, cause we don't wanna replace all those cameras, so, I'm just saying, those are the kind of things we gotta think through as we think about the future, cause just because a company says, seven years, I'm gonna be great, doesn't mean it gonna be great, so what's our contingency plan?
We do, we are in, in a process, I mean, I am in the process of working out, uh, with a company called Fuchsia's. Uh, Fuchsia's also operates out of Lafayette PD.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, actually, Lafayette Sheriff's Office too. Lafayette Sheriff's Office operates on a Fuchsia's system and a Motorola's system.
Okay.
So they're doing both. We're weighing the odds of, of either one or both.
Okay.
Because both systems have maybe what one doesn't do, the other one does, and vice versa, when it comes to some of the small things.
Okay.
Because you're talking about an ability with a system that can, uh, pinpoint, if it's a certain, uh, vehicle we looking for, we can go to the past. So this system can connect dots. So that, that, there is, there's the Motorola soft, the Motorola Vigilon software. Uh, and also there's, uh, Fuchsia's that we're also, uh, in the process, I'm waiting for a bid from them.
Okay.
So yes.
We are getting a quote, cause we've been talking about, that is some money we have to-
You, you learn me, I always have a plan B.
Come up with, but I don't think it's that expensive for what we would get, because you're right, we do need a backup.
Yeah, I mean-
And, and, and when we do this, part of the package of this contract here, um, we didn't do the, what if, uh, we went seven years for everything, turn key.
Okay.
So the software, even if we turn a camera off, we still own the software for seven years. So we did a turn key for no matter what we did, seven years is our, is our date to look at. At the end of that seven years, do we want to renew, uh, at, after seven years? Or do you wanna consider Fuchsia's or whatever backup plan we have then? So we, we thought of all that going through. The mayor and I have had too many, probably too many conversations to some extent, but never enough conversations. But, uh, we have looked at all of that, but one thing we wanted to do is make sure that we had, uh, the information coming in off that system for a number of years to come. And then if the decision needed to be made at some point that this is not for us, we had a backup plan with the Fuchsia's system. So we did both. We own it all the way through, so we know the continued information coming in through the cameras is gonna continue to come in. And how do we roll that out into intel? And, and what you're gonna probably get from me in the coming months, and, and the mayor and I have discussed, um, because we, we're looking to go real time.
Pushing for it.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm, I'm gonna have a proposal coming soon, um, because there is a way that we can do this with personnel, uh, to make sure that we have coverage, um, around the clock. And that's something that we wanna do to be proactive, because if we have, as, you know, I get reports from time to time of people with guns and all these things walking down the street, we wanna see it. And if we do, we wanna send cars.
And we wanna see it in real time. So basically, we'll be coming for a couple of more people at some point. Let's build a system and get it going, and then we'll be coming for a couple of other employees, so that we have real-time monitoring, you know?
Okay.
So basically, we become our own center, you know, and then that's that real-time crime center. So that, that's what we're, that's what we're building too. Uh, this is the first part of that, which is a big part of it. Because this is not a, a small sneeze, this is a big one. But this is the most important part of it, because this is the information we can actually actively see. Where we can get ahead of those things to happen. You know, you talked about the parks, and it's a great point. Can, can we protect that? Well, a car can roll by and something can happen thirty seconds after, and we've seen it happen that way. We've had cars that have been two blocks away from a shooting. You know, so we know that our car rolling by is not necessarily gonna stop someone from doing bad things.
Right.
But that camera doesn't sleep. And we plan on dealing with our parks with cameras too, to make sure that, we, we wanna keep the people that are playing pickleball in those types of activities, we wanna keep you safe. So if we see something coming, I can send cars to intervene before it gets there.
Agreed, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because obviously, we're gonna be depending on this system to help us in places where our police officers can't be. Now, I will tell you that, um, as I mentioned earlier, I was on the radio talking about an event, and a bunch of questions came up. And so, one of the things that people here are concerned about, and I prob, I'm sure when we do public hearing about this, there'll be a few people might show up. People are concerned about, one, cameras being hacked and, um, you know, and their privacy issues. So we need to be able to talk about that, um, for the public hearing. So just so you know what questions came up.
No, and, and I think I talked about it the last time, that we're not looking to see in people's houses. That's not what this is indicated for. This is, uh, street cameras, crime, crime cameras to see down streets where we have active problems.
Right.
Um, and, and we all know that, sad to say, that not a lot of things happen, uh, inside people's houses per se. Most of our stuff is happening on the streets. So if we can protect our streets, we feel we can protect our homes. Because it, it's going to houses, so it's gotta get there. So if we can prevent that from happening, from getting from point A to point B, where they wanna do something really bad, that's where we think we can make a big difference. I keep saying the two key words, I think this is a game changer. You know, cause this, this is eyes that, uh, you know, I can add fifty more policemen, but they're still gonna have to roll by certain places. This thing is set, you know, and, and it's, it's, it makes a difference.
So, and let's just, let's be clear with the public. I mean, I know something else that was said was, crime cameras don't stop crime. We're not necessarily saying that that's gonna stop crime, but what we're saying is that we're gonna be able to solve crimes faster. Because we hope we have video of what happened and who did it, correct?
Here's, here's the interesting part, and, and you made a good point, and this is where, we're talking about a hurt twenty-five locations now. We have three, and that thing has solved multiple crimes. And it's only three locations.
Right. So it didn't prevent it, but we were able to solve it because we could see what happened.
But you snatch a shooter off the street quicker, that's before they retaliate and shoot somebody else.
Exactly.
So I, I would beg to say that it can prevent crimes, you know, because you, you get in that retaliation mode where people are hunting other people, which unfortunately happens. You know, you, you catch him quick because of a camera, you prevented a shooting. That, that, that prevents-
And, and we get tips on, on certain cars they may be in, and certain places they may at, we'd be able to pull it up. You know, you could send cars to go try to search, and then what if they get called off to another call, and it just takes that away. Now, we, we see something, we send in cars.
Right.
So now you have real-time action. And that's why I think that, and I believe that, this is the first biggest part of this. Not a personnel part of it that the mayor mentioned, is the second part of that, because we wanna build a good eyes on the eyes. You know, and, and that's gonna be the second part of that. Um, our, our units right now, I mean, our investigative team right now is almost at an eighty percent solve rate on major crimes when it comes to shootings and homicides. That's unprecedented. I mean, it just, uh, that, that's, our, our people do a fantastic job. But we don't wanna be, uh, reactive, we wanna be proactive. Cause we wanna get it before it happens. Reactive means we're gonna solve it. We know we can solve crime. We have a team that can do it. We'd rather not have to do it. I'd rather, I'd rather, hate to say it, I hate, I'd love our people to be bored. I could find other things for them to do. But I'd love them to be bored on, on the, on the violent crime stuff.
Agreed. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, this is the money that came from the CLECO contract, right? I wasn't here for that.
Yes, sir.
And, um, we could pay them as they progress, and after that, it's gonna be a monthly fee?
No monthly fee.
After you pay them?
Right.
That's it?
We invest this money-
For seven years.
Seven years, we have what we have, but the system's paid for. So we're gonna pay them, it's like one point three million dollars.
Point three.
But it's, uh, twenty-five cameras at a time. They get twenty-five up, we pay. Get twenty-five up, we pay. And we want them as fast as we can get them, but, uh-
But it's no monthly fee?
No, that's all worked into the deal for seven years. I don't have another CLECO contract to negotiate, so.
Yeah, is the, um, it's really two agreements, right? It's a purchase agreement and a service agreement.
Yes.
And I had a question about the term of the purchase agreement, cause in one place it says it's one year from the last signature, and another place it says it's three. So I don't know.
Motorola doesn't do seven-year contracts, so they had to add the additional years into different parts, if it makes sense to you. Um, cause they, you know, when I did seven years, it was kind of, it was a really odd number.
Yeah, they, they didn't wanna do that.
The mayor and I felt that we wanted to get as far as we could extend within, um, what we thought we could, we could, uh, be able to afford.
Could afford.
And that seven years was a spot that I was at, and then I, when I bid out to different companies to come in and bid their products, um, this was within that range when they, when that bid came in.
And they really wouldn't go any longer, because-
No, I, I, I'm not concerned about, I mean, that sounds like a good thing to me.
Yeah.
But the, the sales contract talks about a one-year term.
If you, yeah, if you look at whatever the purchase agreement says, seven years on one of the lines, I believe, as he sent it in. If I looked at, cause I had him, I made sure he added it into one of the main parts that the mayor's gonna sign, where it says seven years.
The term of contract under service investment information, it says seven years or eighty-four months.
Yes.
Beginning January thirty, twenty-twenty-four, end date February first, twenty-thirty-one.
Okay, but you're looking, you're looking at the second agreement.
Correct.
Cause the first agreement, yeah, the first agreement is the sales agreement.
Correct.
And the first agree, cause there are two agreements here, and the first one says, the, um-
Number eight.
Sales agreement, yeah. The term is one year. But then later on, in the same agreement, it says additional provisions, paragraph twenty-five. If either party desires to dis, discontinue any services under this agreement prior to the expiration of the three-year term. So I don't know what that is. You know, it's, it's kinda inconsistent.
Right.
It's, it looks to me like they sign up to sell it to you, and within one year, they have to do a bunch of things to install it.
And they have up to a year.
Yeah, it looks like one year, and then-
Yeah, they have a year to install it, yes.
After that, there's a master service agreement where they do the things that are in that agreement for another seven years. So, and the master service agreement's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus. And is that in addition to the purchase price for the, let's see?
You add the two together.
I don't think so. If you add them up, I think it comes up to that number.
I, I, I believe that, that what it is, the products are seven years, uh, un, under the agreement. And then the, the actual service, which is the maintenance part of it, is seven years also. Because Active Solutions is not Motorola. They are an authorized Motorola dealer. And they do service on the installations and those types of things. So, uh, Active Solutions is its own company, but they're not Motorola. They're just not, I say just, they're an authorized Motorola dealer.
What, something else on that, um, on that purchase agreement for the, um, the platinum service agreement, which is what you're talking about? The total on the quote is one ninety-four, eight hundred. And then, no, no, this one's one hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred. But on here, it's on the customer service plan, it says one eighty-two, twenty-two dollars.
What, was there a discount that applied? Because there was several, and, and part of what, um, and, and this company, when they post that bid to us, they gave us a bunch of end-of-year discounts.
Okay.
So they applied a bunch of discounts.
That's entirely possible.
Came in with their cost.
Right.
Okay.
They actually beat every other Motorola authorized dealer out there.
Okay.
By a good amount.
By a good amount, by six figures.
So, yeah.
So do we adjust that to, say, one year and get rid of that three-year part?
I don't, it looks to me like it's one year.
Yeah, cause I, I wonder, it needs to all be installed in one year. What we didn't want, that we talked about, was we didn't want them taking their sweet time.
Right.
I wanna pay them in twenty-five camera bundles, but I want them to move. I don't want them to go get another job and go somewheres else. We have sweated and worked really hard to get this, and the community, and the police department's counting on it. So if it has a contradiction of one year and then three years, we should just make it both one.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and I could tell you this though, uh, the actual, uh, CEO of that company called me up this morning. They're, basically, what they make financially, uh, is off those installations and getting the cameras up and running. So they're wanting to start now, um, because they don't get paid anything, because all the other stuff they're doing is going to paying for the product. So anything they're gonna do is based off of them getting this thing running. So they're looking to get running, that's why they wanted, uh, twenty-five at a time, so they can actually get some finances in to cover their cost. Cause it's like any company, they're gonna pay for their inventory. So they need to pay Motorola for all the stuff that's coming in. So they're, they can't do anything until they get everything installed, because we're not cutting a check until it's up and running.
Okay, so can we just make sure that the pricing on the replacement cameras is gonna be the same pricing that's in this agreement? And that it's not gonna go up throughout the seven years?
As long as we tie it to state contract pricing, we'll have a cover. Because we're, we're buying under state contract, and you don't normally get cheaper under state contract. But we could just add that in, that any additional would be at state contract price.
Yeah, that way we-
Which may change though.
It will, but it still will be the, kind of the cheapest price out there.
Right.
But at least if we tie it to something, it's better than leaving it open-ended, you know?
And I can, yeah, and I can tell you this, and the mayor, the mayor's aware, cause we, one thing that him and I were, wanted the ability to do was to, uh, be able to move, uh, up to ten cameras a year if we want, needed different placement. Let's just say that there was ten locations that were stagnant with, with nothing happening, and there was ten locations that were having a lot of stuff, problems. At no cost to us within that seven years, ten, up at ten cameras a year will cost us nothing to move locations.
Excellent.
So that's a part of this negotiation too.
We feel it's gonna work, and when it works, I wanna be able to solve an area and move over to somewheres else, it's, you know, ah.
It, yeah.
Yes, sir. Jeff?
So is the cost, I'm, I'm looking at the end of the first contract. The first page, little spreadsheet, a hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred dollars and fifty cents. And then the next page is one million, thirty-five thousand, five fifty, and the next is sixty-eight, four twelve. And then on the master service agreement, it talks about-
The trailer.
Yeah, I know.
Put you add them all up, and we had one-three.
Well, the master service agreement talks about contracted amount to cover seven-year period, a hundred and eighty thousand, twenty-two fifty. Is that in addition to the purchase?
I have to look at that. I'm not, I, I don't believe that they're double charging us. I think the first part is Motorola's agreement with the seven years on licensing with, uh, parts and, and guaranteeing their products will work and being a replacement. The seven-year with Active Solutions on the maintenance is a, is a separate deal. Because their maintenance has nothing to do with Motorola. It's their installation, their, their maintenance of maintaining the system, making sure it's working. And basically, if a camera stops working, what they will do is, on our behalf, is take that camera down, ship it back to Motorola on a, on their warranty, get it back and put it back up.
Yeah, and they fix it.
I, I based everything on one-four. We have one point seven million. We hold three hundred thousand, that's streetlights. That the police will pick where they need them for the cameras, and then after that was left, we divide up per district, like we talked about. So I based everything on one-four to make sure that we had enough money. We did add the mobile unit in.
Yes, the, yeah, well, the, the mobile unit falls in at one-three, that's a sixty-eight, you see?
Yeah.
Uh, that sixty-eight is a mobile trailer that we can move to any location, should we have festival or whatever it is.
It bumped me up a little though, cause at first we thought it was cheaper.
Yeah, we thought it was gonna fall forty.
We thought it was like thirty thousand and sixty-eight thousand. So I know that I spent more money on that, but I think that's important. Cause that can move around where we got a hotspot, that can move around where we have a festival. Uh, I think, I see them all over Lafayette, and, and they do work.
Yeah, Lafayette bought six of them.
Six of them, I know.
So one more thing that, Chief, you may wanna look at is on that quotation from Active Solutions, where it says one ninety-four, eight hundred is the total. Um, you have a service gold, which is gold-level service package, and that's, um, I think we're paying twelve thousand for that. Then we have a platinum-level service package, that's another fifteen thousand. I mean, I don't know what the difference is. I didn't see a distinction between the two. So what's covered on the gold, what's covered on the platinum?
I'll get it break, I'll get it broken down.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, uh, by the way, I know the mayor talked about one-four, we're still out on, on the rest of it, because I understand that there is a negotiation with Fuchsia's as our secondary system.
Right.
So that's why we have some wiggle room between one-three and one-four, cause I'm not exactly sure, because we would do the same thing with Fuchsia's on a seven-year.
Okay.
So we want that to fall in line as a backup for us.
I'm also still negotiating with CLECO, okay, because I wanna put these cameras on their poles.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
And we are making headway, where you remember before, that wasn't even an option. So I'm waiting on legal, but we are working on that. I talked to, uh, Willie today. And so that is being worked on, because I really wanna get that. Uh, we have eighteen poles that we own that don't have cameras on them. And so those are city poles, so immediately, they're gonna start on the eighteen. But I'm getting an answer as quick as I can. Is that legal? Legal doesn't move that fast, as we found out. But I, I'm, I'm very hopeful that, you know, that's, that's gonna work out. And then we don't have to buy poles.
Then the company's talking to us about if we can, if it's a whip that we can connect to, that's one of the costs we'll save too.
If it's a CLECO pole, then they just whip down the power, cause it's already there. If it's our pole, then we spend more money with electricians.
Yeah, we have that.
So that's a kind of a little ace in the hole we waiting to, waiting to hear.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just had a question about the service investment, you know, the master service agreement, that hundred and eighty thousand dollar cost. I don't see it in the other agreement. Is it a different cost?
Whi, which part?
Okay, the master service agreement says contracted amount to cover seven-year period, a hundred and eighty thousand, twenty-two fifty. And the billing period is annually, but it's seven-year total in advance. So I'm, this one eighty, twenty-two fifty, looks like that's the cost of the service agreement, which is in addition to the cost of the purchase of the equipment.
Okay.
So we just need to make sure that that's-
First thing, I'll, I'll check on that along with-
Yeah, yeah, because if, if it's, it's a different contract, looks like it has, has a different price.
Okay.
You know, we're buying the car, and then we're buying some kind of extended service agreement. And the car and the service agreement are two different things.
Well, I could tell you this, that that's why, now, we are adding additions, kinda like this, we are buying the extended warranty.
Yeah.
So this is what, what you described, is that, so, so that is, so Motorola doesn't do a seven-year, so we had to extend that. To extend that warranty per se, the maintenance and all that. To extend that warranty per se, the maintenance and all that, to get to seven years. That's probably where the gold and platinum, I will get that verbiage cleared up.
Yeah.
What comes in, because they had to, what comes with gold might be three years, cause that's generally Motorola's rule of thumb. I had to go another four, so that's where platinum and those things are added into there. But I will get the verbiage cleaned up though.
Okay.
Yeah, and if, if that one eighty is included in the stuff in the first agreement, fine, but if not, we need to know it.
Okay.
Um, so the gold level seems to cover years two through four and platinum seems to cover five through seven.
So you have, you have to buy the gold.
You gotta buy the gold to get to the platinum, yes.
Okay.
You know what, that amount and this to be charged.
Right.
Right.
Unless, you know, unless that's what it costs and that's what you wanna do.
Right.
But it's just not clear to me. Um, I had a question about the term. There's a hold harmless agreement in here, we have to protect them and hold them, that's probably not insured by our insurance company. And I know in the past, we've taken a look at these things and said, how important is this contract? Because if we have to defend them against our liability, then things caused by our liability, then that may be on our nickel and not insured. So I just wanna point that out. And that's just a general issue that we have from time to time. Um, vandalism is not covered. I mean, if somebody shoots these things, that's us. Acts of God not covered, storms not covered. And on the privacy issue, you know, if, if somebody hacks into the system.
They're just gonna see the streets in.
Everything we're filming is public, you know, so I don't think anybody's got a reasonable expectation of privacy. If somebody hacks in and messes with the, you know, the video or something like that, I, I could see a problem, but, but just, just accessing it.
And, and I believe this works on encryption.
Yeah.
It works on encryption.
I was gonna answer, um, Ms. Deed's question she asked about, I think Active, Active Solutions is just a provider of the equipment and a Vigilon.
Yes.
A Vigilon is a software, I mean, I have to pay a license, you have to pay a license per camera.
Yes.
Correct? So if something happened with Active Solutions, you could always go to a different vendor.
Okay.
Cause they're just providing the support of the equipment and the soft, the Vigilon and the cameras.
Excellent.
Cause I'm assuming a Vigilon is recording everything.
Yes.
So that's their software using it. And you're talking about using Fusion on top of it to, I guess, manipulate it.
Yes, right, yes.
Correct?
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
So I mean, if, if something happened with Active Solutions, you could always get another vendor.
Okay.
They're just providing the support for the equipment.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and, and basically, you, 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 when it comes to, he understands the storage side of it. Basically, we have, I believe it's forty-five days or sixty days of storage. But when we have something that has actively happened, that's where these, these other systems like Fuchsia's and, and a Vigilon come in, because you're basically dragging that to a spot where you save it on our server.
Okay, good.
That meeting interruption was brought to you by Vince Camo LLC. Thank you, Vince.
Uh-oh, how much do we owe you?
We don't normally do that, but you're not billing us either, so.
Okay.
Ricky, I think you had something?
On a liability issue, um, Jeff, um, I, I mean, first of all, that's a well-written contract. I read the thing, you know? That's written by some really sharp individuals. So, um, I didn't see anything I have met on natural disaster. Uh, you know, who pays for natural disaster? I, I didn't see it, I may have missed it. But, um, I'm just curious, we get a major hurricane and here knock a bunch of cameras off the pole, do we need to cover insurance for these cameras or, you know, who, who's gonna pay for them?
Well, on, under the, under the, um, service agreement, items not covered. And I, I don't see if the pages are numbered, but it's in there.
Yeah.
Um, scheduled services, this, items not covered includes damages caused by misuse, abuse, accident, disaster, fire, flood, water, wind, lightning, acts of God, so on and so forth.
So, okay, so.
That's on us.
All right, so we covered.
No, we're not covered.
Not covered.
We're not covered.
We're not covered.
We're not covered, that's what I'm saying. We got, that's why we're not covered, so we gotta talk about a new, uh, uh, liability coverage.
Well, we either get a policy or we use our self-insured fund. And, and we, in the wisdom that this council had, from the very beginning that I've been here, we did put together a self-insured fund. It's for the whole city, but we did put together a self, a self-insured fund and we have a million dollars in our self-insured fund.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, to get casualty insurance on that kind of equipment, man, I think that'd be expensive.
That's why we set up.
You know, not liability, but casualty.
That's one of the reasons why we set up a self-insured.
That's right, casualties.
Yeah.
So as long as we got a plan, an action plan, you know, cause, uh, nine times ten, we're gonna get a natural disaster, we're gonna get some cameras blown off poles, I would just think, you know, so.
It's very unusual. When I got here and we kinda redid some of the insurances and we were with Brown and Brown, one of the first things Mark O'Meara told me was, and he's the insurance guy, start yourself a self-insured fund. If you're gonna be smart about it, find a way to squirrel away some money that you have a self-insured fund. So when your insurance man tells you, don't buy another policy, put some money aside, I listened. And so these are the kind of things that we would utilize it for.
And that's great. Um, so one thing that we, I don't see in here is, and I'm assuming it says twelve to twenty-four hours following, uh, received a service call, but then it says, system failures based on acts of God or deliberate harm are not covered under this agreement. So, one, we need to find out if we do have a major hurricane and we know this, it's only not, it's not if, when. Uh, and they are knocked off the poles, how quickly can we expect them to come out and fix these things? And what would be their hourly rate for us to have them come out and do this work? Because that's not covered. So we need to know if we do have some sort of natural disaster, what's our timeframe to getting back online?
Of course, the poles have to be put back up if the hurricane.
Yeah, but we've always said Cleco's out there, lickety-split, so, you know, if Cleco's out there, they should be right there with Cleco.
And we're even better if we're on Cleco poles, because they're gonna put their poles back really quick.
Exactly.
Remember now, this is not, this would not be possible without a franchise agreement. I know, without a franchise agreement for.
Ricky, don't go there.
I got the floor.
Don't go there.
I don't talk over you.
Yes, you do, but okay.
You gotta remember that we had a twenty-five-year franchise agreement. So this would not be possible and we protecting our community through a, an effort through this administration, this council to sign a franchise agreement, that we're gonna solve crimes and protect our people, so let's give credit to Cleco. When the poles fall, they're gonna put them back up and our cameras gonna be up.
Okay, well, until they agree to let us put it back, the cameras on the poles, we're not giving them any credit. Let's get that out of legal first.
Okay, moving along. Yes, sir, you haven't spoken at all. What a breath of fresh air.
When I'm learn, I've learned to be quiet when I'm learning, a lot of IT stuff going on, I'm learning, I'm like, wow. It did sound like, you know, buying a car though, so. I'm gonna use that information on this car purchase. But what if just, what if just the cameras knocked down is a, is a point too?
It is, it is.
It's possible for just the cameras to get knocked down.
That it is.
So.
The chief wrote it down, we're, we're gonna get an hourly rate, I think that, that, there's wisdom in that.
We have to have an hourly rate, we need to know how much it's gonna cost.
Hourly rate and response time, right?
Exactly, exactly.
If Cleco come up today, then they need to come up at least tomorrow.
Exactly.
Hopefully, if we got a major storm, people not doing crime.
But we, sometimes you have looting and stuff that goes on.
That's right, they got looting, but.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we.
Looting, you know.
We want the cam, the cameras up, right?
Right, right.
As quickly as possible. Or even to be able to see who needs help, where's flooding? Who needs help? I mean, those cameras can help us in a lot of ways.
At the same time, we have a city curfew. We, you know, remember our police department sleeps in this building, they're here, they don't go home. So we do have the city, uh, in a, in a positive way locked down when there's a hurricane. I mean, that, that is a big help because we know that we could have, you know, issues. And the chief is texting them right now, we'll see. I can see them.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, in the case of a disaster like that, um, I know we have to pay for the cameras if they're broken and all. So they replace the cameras and we pay them, plus their hourly or whatever wage to, to hook them up again?
If, uh, if, you're talking about if it's like act of nature or what that is? Yes, I mean, we, we have to replace the, the product, but I'm gonna double check and I'm asking a question as I'm doing that, but, um, of whether their service agreement would cover the service to put it under, under the fact that, that we had that service agreement on the maintenance side of it, would that cover them not charging us a maintenance, that, that fee to do it? So I'm trying to get, I'm gonna get that answer. Um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, obviously the, the actual camera itself, we'd have to pay for.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah.
But they would get it and just charge us for it?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions, comments? I love this, it's good stuff.
This is one reminder.
Council Bruce Art, sorry. Let's call him Mr. Bruce Art.
My little two-bitchin'. Uh, for the people's sake, these are two separate cameras we're talking about tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
School is school on the eighth. Don't pass somebody's schools or go slow at the time. These cameras we're talking about right now are catching the criminals. You're not a criminal, don't worry about these cameras. You know, they're for criminals. When we sleeping at night, these things are working. You know, so in a big way, uh, it's two separate things we're talking about right now. And they do not cost the citizens any money to put it up. Where you gonna get caught is in the school zones, you gonna pay your fine. So in a big way, it's gonna help New Iberia, a lot of cities are using these things. We see it on TV that they're using these things. And I think it's gonna be good in the long run to remember like, you're saying, Cleco gave us a big present. Let's use it wisely. A million and a half dollars almost, that's a lot of money. So in a big way, uh, yeah, we come out on top on that. And I hope Cleco puts a pole up, Rick, as fast as it come down. We need to put a camera back.
Thank you for clarifying the two kind of cameras. I think that was important. People were gonna, people have asked me if we were gonna have a hundred and twenty-five speed cameras, so that, that was a good point.
Well, we can make some money.
Well, we're not doing that.
Don't do it.
It's not a money grab.
About the money.
Thank you.
Oh, no, it's not about the money, but there's, we have a big speeding problem all over town, everywhere.
You know, if they think they are, that wouldn't be a bad thing. We're not going to. It slows people down. One at a time, one at a time. They won't give tickets, but. Call for the question. Oh, yes, I'm calling for the question. I, I can't even vote or call for the question, but I'm about to. No, any other discussion on this item?
Oh, just one last comment.
Yes, ma'am.
On, on the, uh, this big gift that we getting from Cleco. We'll be paying for it twenty years past that seven that we, on this contract that we talking about right now. That's my last comment.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Good discussion, I appreciate it. Tell me that work.
Oh, we're gonna have some answers by the time we meet again to have public comment on this, correct? Think so, Chief?
Yes, I think the chief is working on answers right now, correct, Chief? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we will have, we, we will.
I mean, I know it's gonna come up again, we just, we need those answers before we vote the next time.
Okay, not a problem. All right, Madam Clerk, six A.
Revisit the state of buildings located at six twenty East St. Peter Street, District Five in Action, Resolution Number twenty-four dash oh five.
Come on up, Matt.
You got pictures?
Ah, we do.
All right, I need a, uh, motion on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Representative Goslin and Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. All right, uh, you get to tell us the story.
Give us a little history.
What we got is six twenty East St. Peter Street. It's been up there for a little bit, I think, so y'all should be all familiar with this house. Um, this is what it looks like this morning, you know, I got pictures from all over around, so.
And we have the owners of the property here?
I think we have the owners here.
Okay.
Mr. Michael and Ms. Robin.
Yes.
They boarded it up, you know, they, since, I think, the last meeting. I think that's what y'all wanted them to do.
Yep.
So I, I don't know what their plans are with the house. I would assume you wanna remodel it. But I would need a scope of work to do that.
Yep, and a permit.
And a permit to get that, yeah. So that's where we're at with it.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
That's in my district, um, and I was gonna go with option five, that we're kinda satisfied with their remediation, because we asked them to board it and they did board it. Um, however, I would love for them to kinda tell us if they think they're gonna be doing any type of renovations anytime soon. Another month, okay. Um, but they did, exactly, I mean, they did it within the timeframe we asked, so I'm, I'm good with that.
You gotta re-level, you wanna let it re-level it first?
Okay.
So the foundation can sit up the right way that I want and then I'm gonna tell the floors out.
Okay.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna do, that's what I'm doing, that's what I'm giving the money for.
Okay. So, I mean, in the words of Councilman Lewis, ugly meets cold, so we, we're there, we got what we needed. So he's made it secure, it's not a safety issue for the community anymore, so we're good.
Did the yellow one too?
Oh, you did the yellow one too? Oh, wow, that's awesome.
I ran them.
Oh, good, okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
So, Matt, I don't know, I can't see, but you, 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 you were informed that you're gonna have to get an, an, an estimate on what it's gonna cost and if it doesn't meet the fifty percent threshold, you gotta come back, bring the, the building up to code, correct? He was told that, Matt, right?
Well, not necessarily till now, right.
You're saying, yeah, I'm just, I wanna make sure you were told that, so you know the process that you're gonna have to get an estimate on the building. And if it doesn't, if it doesn't, if it's, doesn't meet fifty percent of what the estimated cost of the whole building, you gotta bring it back at the city code.
Right.
So that, that's a, that's a big step, you need to understand that, it's a big stipulation with that facility. Cause if it doesn't, you're talking about a major expense to bring it back. Am I correct, Matt?
Yes, yes.
So, I just, I mean, look, you know, I want you to do it, I really do, I, I, hands up, I want you to make it ever, but before you get too deep, I want you to make sure you understand that.
I went to pay the taxes and it looked like we're getting charged by Iberia Parish Sheriff's Office, some odd reason.
You pay city taxes and you pay parish taxes, cause the city in Iberia is in the parish. So I can't get you out of that one.
Well, no, it's not, it's not that, but it's, it's what I went to pay. It's not what it is on here, it's, it has her name on it.
Yeah, it got too much on it.
It's like four hundred and something dollars and I don't know.
Well, on the parish side, we don't.
But it doesn't have my name on it, but on the actual, like, I did try to do it online. I paid hours, you know, online and fly her property across the street. And, um, I don't know, it's, it's not reading right.
Yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, and it could be, when did you get this property?
We just, uh, like.
Too much of it?
Yeah. So what happens is the, um, when documents are recorded to transfer property in the clerk's office, the assessor picks those up and makes the change in the roll. But that doesn't happen right away, so there's a delay. So very often, if you have something that gets transferred at the end of the year, it'll take months for them to change the assessment. So I think, um, I would talk to the assessor's office and, and tell them what, what's going on and maybe even show them a copy of your sale or donation or whatever it was, cause, um, the fact that it's in somebody else's name is not surprising if you just got it. It takes time.
It has, it has both our name, yeah, her, her name first, it has to be as like a code.
That means they haven't changed the whole thing yet, so I think that probably means it's in process. Cause if they got something, if they've got an old name and they see, they know about a new transfer, they'll do that care of until they do the whole thing, but I talk to the assessor.
Back taxes or something, I was like, I thought it was here.
I don't know, cause I.
Are you sure that everything was done before?
I'm not reading your papers, but, um, but, um, having it in a prior owner's name like that is not unusual. Talk to the assessor's office. Yeah, cause what you wanna make sure is at the end of the year, you get the bill and you pay it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the house is gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be no expenses, uh, like, I mean, we had to get past the holidays. We have kids, you know, so, and, uh, but it was, it was my dad's house for a very long time. And he, y'all might know him, he's Robert Rain, he just retired from the city, um, of Iberia last month. Uh, we finally got him to retire, so it used to be his home. And so that's why I have a lot of memories in that house, so like, it's gonna be a, a passion project. And so that's why I have a lot of memories in that house, so like, it's gonna be a, a passion project.
Good, thank you. Is there, you had something else?
So, Ms. Reed, you, you requested that we go with option five?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, my, um,
Matt.
Matt, I'm thinking. I was thinking Jimmy. A good thing I didn't say it. Yeah, well, it's closer.
I know.
Thanks for the help, man.
Yeah, I don't want you going like Jimmy Junior or something.
Yeah, yeah. So i- if we read number five, if you read the license on the file, it says that, you know, the structure located has been satisfactorily repaired to conform in building code of the city in Iberia by property owner. This structure does not satisfactorily repair to building code in Iberia.
Not currently.
Not currently, so we can't go with five. We have to go with three and get an update on repair status, is my recommendation. It's your district, but if you look at both, I don't think five fits where, where, where we wanna go. My opinion.
So, so Freddie, can I get the floor?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Okay, so the reason why I picked five because there is no option that says they've remediated and we're good with it because they boarded it up. So either we need, we need to change this and add a number six because they did exactly what we asked them to do. So three doesn't, to me, three isn't appropriate because we are not telling them that they have to start repairing that house anytime soon. So unless we're saying, you know, five years from now, hey, what, we wanna see what you've done, we're not telling them when they need to start repairing because it meets the, the standard today.
But we don't always follow those numbers.
Correct.
We many, many times make our own motion. So I think this is the case where you just make your own motion, cause, cause many times we do. We kinda, for a while, got away from the numbers. So I would say we just make one that it's, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you can make a motion that it's acceptable for what we asked them to do and just stop right there.
Okay.
And we don't go into that it meets code and, and we still have something that lets them off the hook, if you will, that gives them time to come back and, you know, move forward.
But take it off the list. Can we, can we, right. Can we, in the future, add another option so that we can do that? Because nothing, when I was looking at this, I'm like, well, nothing really needs to be simplified.
Flexibility to, to do something out of the box.
Okay.
We don't have to follow those numbers, cause when we first started and bought, we were all, y'all remember?
Yeah.
One, two, three, boy, and then that lasted maybe two, three meetings, and then things happened just like this. That it fell through the crack, so we started making our own again, you know what I mean? So you don't have to, just remember, you can, you know, we can, we can be flexible.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we allow them to move forward at their own pace because they have met the requirements that we set in the last meeting.
My second.
All right, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Deidre Johnson Reed and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Any discussion?
Just so you, you don't, you do not wanna update on a date, six months to see what progress is? Nothing?
No, because it's boarded. If they say, they say it's boarded for the next five years, as long as people can't get in, it's not a safety issue, we're good.
Okay.
You can come back to it.
Yeah, I mean, if things, if the, the boards come down and people start going in and out again, we got another issue, but that's.
By some, by some, we're gonna bring it out.
All right.
All right, but good luck.
We're gonna bring it out.
Yes, sir.
He already, Billy, I know Billy, that's family.
Yeah, okay.
Proud of him. I love what he's doing, but I wanna suggest, Deidre, follow your motion. Ricky, I kinda get what you're saying.
Just asking.
Uh, I'm just gonna make some suggestions, cause I mean, I have a couple of houses that's boarded. And I'm not a hypocrite. I'll, I'll suggest that y'all clean up around there, make it more attractive on the, on the passing by side. And I'm gonna tell you, you're not gonna get as many complaints if that house is clean. Some of those boards that are, that are, that are off. I'm gonna put them back on. Yes, I mean, right, but I'm just saying, it don't have to be Cypress, but it, just put it on, yeah, I'm just saying. I understand, but clean it up. I promise you, you won't get as many complaints. Cause I'm telling y'all, council, you're gonna get some more complaints for the aesthetics of this property.
Ugly meets code.
You're gonna get it. For this property, why? Cause it's on St. Peter Street.
I understand.
Across from the road to our house, cause there's a business development across the road by ally ties and all that. You're gonna get some more complaints.
Agreed.
If they was on.
Well, you know what? I get complaints about.
Curry alley or long grass. You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't hear it, but you're gonna hear some more. So as a council, encourage them to get it cleaned up, get it, I'm all for ugly meat, cold, boarded up. But. We got one problem. They never can pick up the trash yet. Oh, we could definitely, we, Councilwoman Reed, we.
I mean, we can do that.
We cleaned the whole house. We leased the whole house, everything. The house clean.
And you own it. You need to put the trash at the road. They can't go on private property.
The trash three weeks.
Yeah, but is it? It looked like it was kinda, when I went by today, it looked like it was kinda set back a little bit, cause they don't go on, it's on the curb.
They told us to take it off the side or if you wanna put it on the side.
Okay, okay, but you got it right, right at the side. Okay, well then, I'll make a call to Pelicans.
Okay, do you, do you want me to do it, or?
It don't matter. I mean, I. Make them work.
Why?
Just make them work. It's your district.
Yes, sir, Councilman Doyle.
I know it's a long time since I've been here.
Gotta be sixty-two.
I think this is nice, the way y'all, y'all broke it down, and if even Edwin makes it easier, it's easier for us to follow it. But one thing we did suggest prior to this council was when they did board it up, uh, uh, she spoke about, if it's a year, two years, they did what we did, it's safe, people can't get in. But we asked them back then, and I thought it was part of our, our, uh, resolution way back when, or ordinance, is it had to paint the plywood to match the house so it wouldn't stand out. And that was something that we did way back when.
Actually, I do remember reading that in the ordinance book.
Yeah, cause painted plywood does not rot as quick as, and it doesn't stand up. That was part, now, y'all might have changed it since I left.
No, I think I remember reading that about painting the plywood.
Enforced it. I'm sorry.
Correct, correct, cause I think it's in there.
Well, I mean, like the boards that you put up there.
Not the house.
Not the house, but the boards that you put up to, to board it. Paint them blue like the one on the other side. Yeah, yeah, that's all we're talking about. Okay. Yeah.
The whole house on?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, is there any other discussion? Then I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. All right, now we move on to, yes? Um, to answer a question? Yeah, sure. Uh, if cameras are damaged and require, I'm gonna hit read what the company's saying, and require replacement, the cost to replace would be the state contract price and one, two hours of labor. Their state contract price is one twenty-five per hour, and they don't charge for travel, they charge for onsite start.
Okay.
So if it takes them an hour or it's one hour. Good answer.
Excellent.
Print it.
Print it and put it in there.
They had that on in the breakdown.
Does that include disasters?
Yes, that's what I asked them.
Okay.
That's, that's.
That's if a camera needs to be replaced for any reason whatsoever, that's on our half, on our behalf.
Okay, excellent.
Good.
Tell them, put it in writing.
It's in writing.
Add that to the contract. Seriously, if it's not in writing, you might lose that phone.
Trust me, I got an IT wood. Vince is not here anymore, but I got an IT section that there ain't nothing, everything's pulled.
Whatever's in writing, it counts.
Print it, print it. Thank you, chief. All right, moving on to item seven A. Madam Clerk?
Kevin's rang to present budget to actual report for November twenty, November first, twenty twenty-two to November thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Evening, council.
Evening.
Evening.
Uh, I know y'all been looking forward to this for two weeks.
Since last month.
Yeah, since last month, man.
It's Christmas.
All right, so we're gonna go over in total, this is the last budget, um, to actuals for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Um, one of the things to remember is revenue cannot, my budgeted revenue cannot exceed my actual by more than five percent. The variance can't be more than five percent. So I can exceed my budgeted revenue. I cannot exceed my budgeted expenses. All right, so general fund, we budgeted twenty-three point four million in revenue. We came in at twenty-two point one, left me a variance of ninety-four point forty-four percent. I make, I should be within ninety-five percent, so I'm off one point five six. There were budget adjustment, it's a month, I'm sorry, end of the year, period thirteen adjustments that I'm still working on for the audit. So I'm confident that we will get within that five percent. For expenses, budgeted expenses were thirty-three point two percent. We came in at twenty-five point two percent. We're at seventy-six point oh two, so when I make my five percent adjustment, I'm just trying to meet that five percent rule. So as you can see, my actual expenses were a lot lower than my budgeted. Parks and Recreation, budgeted revenue one point four, came in at one point four. So we're at a hundred point nine percent of the revenue. Expenses are one point seven. We came in at one point two, so we're at seventy-six point nine three percent of expenses. Uh, nineteen sixty sales tax, budgeted ten point four. We came in at ten point four, so we're a hundred percent of budgeted revenue. Expenses or just, or transfers out seventeen point five. I'm at ten point seven. I came in at sixty-one point twelve percent of budgeted expenses. Police and Fire Public Safety Fund, budgeted revenue four point one four, came in at four point one three. I'm ninety-nine point five percent on the revenue, on the expenses. Four point one million expense, budgeted, actual was three point four, so I'm at eighty-two point eighty-one percent. Highway fourteen TIF, budgeted was three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, actual was three hundred and fifty-eight, so I'm at ninety-four point four five percent. Expenses or transfers out six hundred and ten, actuals were three point four six. I'm at point five percent of what we had said we would budget.
Is, is there a reason why the transfer out was so low?
Correct. I didn't pull that out. That was five hundred thousand.
Oh, okay, so that's part, that's one of the adjustments you're gonna make.
Right. Ma'am, I'm done for the year.
Right, but in this year's budget is when it'll come out.
It's in this year's budget.
Okay, cool.
This year's budget will come out this year.
Okay, cool.
Up to a half a million.
Up to a half a million.
Spanish Trail, their, um, budgeted revenue was twenty-four thousand, actual was thirty-two. So I'm a hundred and thirty-three percent. My budgeted expenses were two hundred and thirteen. I came in at two seventy-five point two one, which is a difference of sixty-two dollars, but it shows me at a hundred and twenty-nine point twenty-one percent.
Yes, sir.
That, um, the TIF on Spanish Trail, any, I mean, we up pretty much on that TIF, which we projected versus what we, we got. Any businesses came there? We didn't have.
That Fab Yard is open again. The McDonald's is, you're talking about the one on one eighty-two?
Yeah, right.
You have McDonald's, you have the gas station, you have that Fab Yard that's open again, uh, that was closed, um.
I'm just.
And then the Emeralds Billiards, so, uh.
But yeah, I mean, it's a lot for that district.
Yeah, it's a little bitty district.
Yeah, I was just wondering, something else happened.
Is the golf course in it?
Uh, no, it didn't go that far.
It don't go before.
Wish it did.
No, I didn't, I didn't know what it lines. I wasn't even aligned.
Pepperplex TIF, budgeted revenue was seven twenty-three. We came in at seven eighty-five, so a hundred and nine percent. Expenses or distributions out, seven hundred and fifty-eight, actual was six oh, six ten, at eighty point four nine percent. And last, oh, almost last. Pepperplex, budget revenue one point one, or one point two, actual was one point two, so we're at a hundred and four point three four percent. Expenses, four point seven million, budgeted, we're actually at three point six. We're at seventy-seven point forty-four percent. Last but not least, Public Works, I'm sorry, I keep, boy, I'm anxious to finish this.
You had a few more, bubba.
Few more. Public Works, three point one revenue, actual was two point nine, ninety-one point five, which is two percent of the revenue.
Is there any reason why it's, it's down from what we projected?
Yes. Majority of Public Works would be transfers in from the general fund. We didn't need them. I didn't transfer them.
Okay. Cool.
Joe Ranney Fisher.
Very good.
That's my answer.
Budget expenses were three point five, actuals were two point eight, so you see, there's your example. Garbage Fund, four point two revenue and four point two actuals, putting us at ninety-nine point forty-eight percent. Expenses, four point two, actuals are four point three, so we exceeded our expenses, but we're still in that five percent. Section eight vouchers, we were one point six budgeted revenue. We came in at one point seven, putting me at a hundred and ten percent. Expenses, one point six. We came in at one point seven, so we came in at a hundred and four point seventy-eight percent. And the reason for that is what we get reimbursed from what I'm staying is dependent upon the previous month, and it's dependent upon the state's calculation. So we got as close as we could. Wastewater, seven point seven revenue. We came in at eight point six, so we're at a hundred and twelve point forty, forty-one percent. Expenses is six point six, actuals were seven point five. We came in at a hundred and twelve point seventy-nine. And what had happened there, we, per communication, I thought we were finished with paying the invoices for the fiscal year. And then we start, invoices started trickling in for work that had been done prior to October thirty-first that we weren't aware we'd get invoice for.
Okay.
So it's something that I will be working on the next fiscal year. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Think you got a good budget, Kevin.
And we will be starting the audit hopefully by the end of the month.
It's a good thing. Thank you. Counselors' remarks, I'm gonna start with Councilman Dan Doyle.
Well, look, it was been fun. Last two mean, you know?
Hey, so far, so good.
I wanna thank y'all for the support, and I, I can't wait to get into it. I've been, um, I just got the budget booked right now, so that's why, Ms. Deidre, I'm not talking too much tonight. But, uh, I'm just, I'm just excited. I wanna thank y'all, and, and the parks, as y'all mentioned, all what's happened is unbelievable. And, uh, you know, did such a great job in three years. I just hope I can follow y'all and continue y'all, the path that y'all going. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Um, so since I wasn't here the other night, I just wanna say welcome. I'm looking forward to working with you for this year. And then I wanna announce to the public that we have two events that's gonna be happening in January, on January twelfth, uh, in the West End Park from ten to twelve. We are sponsoring another mobile market. We're gonna have, um, the same mobile group come out, uh, I think it's what, Second Harvest, and sell, uh, groceries. You can buy vegetables, fruit, um, you can buy chicken, you can buy eggs, you can buy milk, you can buy, uh, butter, whatever those things that you need. Um, the reason why we're doing this, and this is being sponsored by Ashley Orfe, uh, Councilman Lewis and myself, um, because what we're trying to do is bring some services to an area of the town that is a, that is a food desert. And so we're asking people, I mean, this is not just for the West End, although we hope that a lot of people in the West End take advantage of it. We're asking, uh, anybody who, you know, maybe you're struggling, um, you know, groceries are high right now, please come out and take advantage of this event. Uh, also, they accept EBT, so if you have an EBT card, you can capitalize on some low prices and get more than what you normally would get in the grocery store. Um, we're also gonna have Iberia Comprehensive out there, so if anybody hasn't seen a doctor in a while and you'd like to see one, um, please come out. They're gonna be out there. I mean, if you have insurance, bring your insurance card. If you don't, just bring proof of your income showing that, you know, you don't have insurance, and they will provide you with services, whatever you need. If you need a prescription, they'll get the prescription. They'll even have the pharmacy deliver the, uh, medicine to you. So, uh, please take advantage of this. We really will, hope that this is a good service for the community, and we hope to have it, you know, again, in a few months, if people take advantage of it. Um, the second event is we're having a, a women in business kind of, uh, event where we're asking women, and, and we're not excluding men, but we're really gonna, we're trying to focus on women entrepreneurs to come, uh, to the West End Park on January twenty-fourth at six o'clock. And so what we're trying to do is provide them with information on how to become a legitimate business. Um, we're gonna be offering, um, you know, micro loans to people. Sometimes people need five hundred dollars to really kinda get their business started, or maybe they need, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred. Um, we're gonna show them how they can actually get these loans and also build credit for their business and maybe be able to grow their business in the future. So, um, the, both of the events are happening in the West End Park. We hope that you guys come out and take advantage of it. You will also be able to register to vote at the event on January twelfth. So this is a big year for elections. Uh, this whole council is up for reelection, so you guys, please come out, get registered to vote. Um, remember, we always tell you, it's not, I know we always vote for presidential, but it's really important for you to vote for the local elections as well. Thank you.
Do you have times of those events?
Yeah, so on January twelfth, it is from, uh, ten AM to twelve PM. And then on January twenty-fourth, it's from six to seven thirty. And on the, on the women in business thing, we're gonna have a, a drawing for a gift card for a hundred dollars, so come out. And men can come too.
Send the dates out for the mobile market so we can.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Send the dates out.
I, I, I could, I could post it.
Okay.
You have a flyer, get it to me. I'll put it on the website.
I do, okay.
But send it to the council if you don't mind.
Okay, I sure can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I pass tonight.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
So, so January, um, January eighth is a, is a big day, so we wanna thank all the people that were willing to step up to the plate and get elected, they get inaugurated, uh, January eighth, so support all our fellow, uh, people that are. support all our fellow, uh, people that are willing to do the, the justice of the community and serve the people and just do me a favor, just don't get inauguration day mixed up with speed cameras being turned on. Cause if you get a ticket going to inauguration and speed zone, we can't help you. It is what it is, so, uh, yeah, so congratulate, uh, congratulate all the guys, people and ladies and gentlemen that are willing to serve and, uh, and will support them any way we can from the city.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, Dan, glad to see you back. Knowledge, knowledge is worth a lot. And you have a lot of that.
Depends who you ask.
We've both been up here quite a while.
I heard that is mileage.
And Mr. Lawyer, hey, thank you for, for participating today, tonight. You raise your hand more than any one of us, we learned a lot. Uh, but we have a year left, some of us here has enjoyed the last year and do the right vote for the people. And, uh, we thank y'all for supporting us.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, welcome, welcome, Dan, uh, I, I gave you that, uh, salutation I would have you on last Thursday, uh, but not really public. Welcome, glad to have you back, and I was thinking, just like Jeff was when he said knowledge, I thought he said mileage.
A little bit of both.
You do have a lot of political mileage, which is a good thing. But welcome, man, looking forward to working with you for this year. Uh, I'm like Mr. Bruce Sorden, um, Ms. Ledbetter, uh, this is our last year of our second term, people trusted us enough to elect us for two terms and I'm grateful for that, um. You know, I'm looking forward to working hard, I know most people become lame ducks on their last year work, day out. I'm looking forward to work hard, I enjoy the work of serving people. That's all I ever do, wanted to do is help people and serve. And I believe that because of that service mentality, I believe that God through people elevated me to sit in this seat, which I'm proud of. And this isn't an exit speech, I'm going to learn, I'm going to save that one for the end of the year, but this is a just.
Can't wait for that.
Put fire under my feet so I don't become a lame duck, cause I do want to continue to work for my community for this last year. Uh, also, uh, speaking of community, uh, as some of you know and many of you may have heard or hadn't heard, there was a, uh, killing on Lombard Street the other night and, uh, that was, uh, the brother of, uh, one of our own, uh, community activists, Donovan Davis, his brother got, um, got shot, got murdered the other night, uh, and on Lombard Street, they had two, two shootings. And, um, you know, Lombard has basically been quiet, that's, that's, that's my street, that's my block, as we say. And it, over the s- last seven years, it's, it's been basically quiet, um, you had some little incidents, but, uh, you know, one was domestic and one, we don't really know what happened. But, uh, that's why those crime cameras and the deal we did with Cleco to get the cameras, that's why it was such a big deal, that's why I'm adamant about it with so many things happening in our community, but as always, see something, say something. You know, uh, I may joke, I may shoot some little shots, but, um, this is serious business, serving our public. You know, uh, we want to have fun while we're doing it, cause this ain't a, uh, really stressful job, but it's, it, 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 concerns of the public stay on our mind. So, you know, work with us, uh, support us, if you see something, say something, not just crime, uh, tires, trash, all of those things, cause we do need the public to make our job better, to make our city clean and to help our city move forward. That's all I have, man, and Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, I want to wish all you a Happy New Year. Uh, New Year was just a few days ago, it's crazy, it's already kind of passing by already this year. Um, so I'll be hosting with Marcus Broussard, Parish Councilman Marcus Broussard, a Coffee with a Council Member on January twentieth. That's going to be at McDonald's on Darby Lane and it'll be from eight AM till nine thirty. So if any of y'all want to come and chat, come on over. Uh, we're reaching out mainly to our constituents to come and if you have any issues, you just want to talk to us, ask questions, that's what we're there for. Uh, we want to be reachable and for you to be able to have that time with us one-on-one to sit and talk. But as well, if any of you guys want to show up and have coffee, that's fine as well. Um, also, do we know when Cleco is going to start patrolling for lights out? Or do we still need to turn them in? That was a question that I wanted to ask you.
I would say let's do both.
Do both, okay.
And I am talking to Cleco, that's on the list of when, when is the first patrol start.
Okay, good.
Having those discussions, but, uh, I would say still turn them in for now because, you know, we got public to serve.
I have a string on, uh, Jane Street that I need to see about marking them some kind of way.
Not a problem.
Yep, all right, thank you.
One, one question?
Yes, ma'am.
On the, um, lights, should we send you areas where we want the poles installed? Or, cause I mean, I know you say you're going to divide it, but three hundred thousand.
After the PD analyzes that what we need comes out of there for any crime cameras, then we'll have a set amount for each district. I don't mind that you send stuff in and then, you know, we just, the money's going to go equally in each district. If you send too many, if you get in overdrive and you send too many, uh, it'll go on a list for future, but it doesn't hurt to do the legwork at all.
Okay.
You know, not, not that you would put in too many.
Yeah, all right.
But, yeah, it's doesn't, it's a good thing, it's a good thing. All right, I don't have a lot tonight, but I'm, I'm just really proud tonight. When I think of the Cleco issue, when, and the cameras, when I think of the Pepperplex, the half million dollar grant that y'all all helped me get for the demolitions, that you all helped find people, when I think of the Pepper, uh, the drainage grant that is going to free up two point nine million that will have an addition for, you know, drainage, we've got a lot, we're very blessed, we've got a lot of good things coming. Every meeting is, we talking about a project or a park, we have more coming, we have ARPA money that we haven't even utilized yet. I will be ramping that up. We have, uh, when you were talking about business grants, we have money for business grants. We have money for neighborhood associations, I think it's time to let loose and, and get those things coming. We have a couple of ARPA projects we haven't started. Um, we have many of them that are in various phases of, of being done. We should have a little bit of money left at the very end that we can do something else. It has to all be committed by the end of twenty-four, it doesn't have to all be spent until the end of twenty-six. But this council, you know, if you think about the CARES Act money that we spread around last term with the, the members that were here, if you think about the ARPA money that we all had partying, the master study was started right when I got elected, but it's still producing projects with the last term, with, you know, with this council. We got a lot going on and I would like to finish the ARPA money, at least have it all dedicated with y'all. Because y'all kind of have picked up the ball, it just about is, but I know that we have a small balance, we will have a small balance left and we don't want to give any of it back, that's for sure. So we need to let our projects run to make sure that we don't have overages, that we need the money. But on the flip side, uh, you know, I'm just very proud of the work we've done and it's really gelling to a point that I think people are seeing. We have the road money coming, sixteen million dollars, I think it's going to be, it looks like interest rates are going down a little bit. I think it was wise for Jason Akers to say, let me get started in February, March, because your money's going to go further. Um, that, that's just huge for us. So anyway, we've got a lot going on, I can't thank y'all enough, I'm excited for this year, I think it's going to be a good one and nobody over here's a lame duck, we're going to work our butts off until, till we can't, till they tell us to leave. So I appreciate that very much and with that, I need a motion to adjourn, oh, yes, ma'am. We almost got out of here.
You're talking about the demolition, when are they going to start? Cause somebody asked me.
Right, it'll be a little while, did, what did Thomas tell us? Probably the summer, probably the summer. But, but they're coming, the good news is they're coming.
Companies were approved or no?
Well, we, we put in for a half a million, we had over that, but every project by the deadline got approved. Some people sent additional projects in that we're going to have to hold. The good thing is, we kind of think we do this and we succeed with it, this is going to be a reoccurring program. And so now we in the pipeline, so, you know, it won't be too long that I'll say, okay, let's start looking forward again. Yep.
Excellent.
And with that, motion to adjourn. Motion. Thank you.